Good morning and welcome to the August 19, 2019, meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming today. Especially glad to see our players from Sunnyside here today, and parents and family. Great run. Good job. Did us proud. Our invocation is going to be offered by Pastor Leon Tremel from Vision Ministries Outreach. Thank you for being here, sir. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Supervisor Christie this morning. If you can, please stand. Oh, well, wait. Do we have to do roll call first? Yeah, we do. I apologize. I messed up because I was so happy to see Sunnyside in the house. It blinded me, that bright blue. Left an old South Point boy like me blind. That's all right. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valadez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Very good. Now we can stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come before you today to debate issues and to debate feelings, thoughts, and desires. And, Father, I pray that you will guide and direct every person here, everybody here, Lord. Guide and direct every thought they have, guide and direct what they say, what they think, and what they do. And, Father, may these deliberations provide good things, good things for the people of this state. May it provide good things for the people that are here addressing issues. And may you be with us and hear us in what we have to say and do in the name of Jesus. Amen. Let me read one short, short verse, if you can believe that coming from a pastor. The Apostle Paul said, "And now, dear brothers and sisters, first one final thing. Fix your thoughts on what is true and honorable and right and pure and lovely and admirable. Think about things that are excellent and worthy of praise. Keep putting into practice all your learned understanding and knowledge you've received from me. Everything you heard from me and saw me doing, then the God of peace will be with you." Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor. Appreciate your time and your prayer. Positivity coming from St. Paul this morning, so that's all good. We have our wonderful PAC staff that is here today and their leader, Kristin. So nice to see you. And you have a dog with you today that looks like a Sunnyside dog to me. I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying, ostensibly, it belongs on the South Side. Her name is Blanca. I changed it this morning. They had another name, but I was like, ah, that's no good. So I named her Blanca. I guess it's your turn, Kristin. You go at it.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. Good morning, everybody. We are here with Nell Blanca, who is a 12-year-old dog who came to us as a stray with a mystery of a past. She is microchipped to somewhere in Colorado. So we were trying to find her home, but unlikely we will do so, and so she's looking for a new one. And she is what we call a phosphorus dog. She does have tumors that are most likely cancerous. She's 12 years old. But as you can see, she's absolutely happy and healthy and is looking for a home where she can spend her golden years. One quick announcement. We had Clear the Shelters this weekend.
Yay!
And it was pretty amazing. We had 130 adoptions, about 200 for the weekend. So the place was packed. The lines to the food trucks alone were 40 people or more. So it was a great turnout, and thanks to everybody who adopted a pet this weekend.
All right. Thank you for all your work.
Kristin, I think you've got, in terms of the adoptions, what about the cat adoptions this weekend?
Oh, yes. For the first time, we did more cat adoptions than dog adoptions during a Clear the Shelters event. So a huge turnout for the kitties.
That's great. That's great. Well, I know it's been a really tough month and a half there at PAC with a lot of animals. I know you all have been working extra hard, so we're extra proud of you and appreciate all that extra work that you've done. And so thank you to you and your volunteers, and know that you're in our hearts every day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give her another round of applause. Is that called to the public? Okay, we got the call to the public today, and we only have three cards that have been submitted. So I'm gonna start with Celeste Lupu. Thank you for being here. And you have three minutes to address the board after giving us your name. I can't help but think of your mother every time I see you.
I know. I wear that.
Wow.
So, thank you.
Oh, you might want to pull that microphone just a little bit towards you.
Thank you, Council Supervisors, for inviting us and allowing us this opportunity. My name is Celeste Lupu Rogers. This is my husband, Joseph Rogers. I am sure you all know my mother, Marion Lupu. She's here in my head with us, over the shoulder. We have Dancing in the Streets Arizona. We're located at 88 West 38th Street and South 6th Avenue and 38th Street, right next to Social Security Building.
In the city of South Tucson?
In the county of Pima. So what I'm here today for is, as my mother passed away, I've been the last two years doing all the things that she used to do. And one of them is the petition for redemption of property tax for every business. We're a nonprofit ballet organization. Somehow, I slipped going to library and getting my little stamp of approval this year, so I'm going through the process. I submitted a petition for redemption of property tax exemption waiver here. And they said that the next step is we were supposed to be on the agenda for you guys to submit the rest of my paperwork. I didn't see our names on the agenda, so I'm not sure what the next step is.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Valadez, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Obviously, we're prohibited because of call to the audience.
Right.
But if you see the young man right behind you in the very Sunnyside blue shirt, please talk to him and get the information for him, and we'll be in contact.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker's gonna be Joe Bogart. Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
One more time. You have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors after giving us your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Joe Bogart, a resident of Pima County and a member of the Bond Advisory Committee. I was also spokesperson for the opposition to the last two bond initiatives, combined over $1.3 billion. The voters sent a clear message to the Board of Supervisors by soundly defeating all eight bonds. Yet, the three horsemen of the apocalypse, the three ruling board members, turned a deaf ear and continue to squander the citizens' money. Acquiring a golf course for forgiving money owed, a bowling alley with serious issues, and providing sweetheart deals to high-risk companies, one of which, according to Tucson.com, has suspended operations. The three horsemen again are considering a plan whereby the taxpayers will provide financing and special consideration to an entity, the University, the U of A, well able to finance their own special needs and pay fair market value. This raises two issues with me. The first, the board majority appears to have a propensity to give aid to the wealthy. The U of A's budget is $2.6 billion, twice that of the county. Banner Health, another beneficiary, according to Forbes, paid their president and VP $34 million and was in the top six who collectively banked over $40 billion in profit the last reporting period. Yet, the horsemen see fit to extort tax from Pima citizens for their benefit. Second, the U of A courthouse conversion has been referred to as a crown jewel. I would prefer the crown jewel to be our roads, our schools, and our neighborhood parks. This is what companies look at, basic quality of life, not museums and repositioned baseball stadiums. I want everybody in the room and throughout the county to address each of you and ask themselves, in the past 30 years, has our Board of Supervisor, number one, fixed our roads? Two, spent our money wisely? And three, brought prosperity to Pima County? I've answered these questions myself, and my conclusion is what convinced me to file as the candidate for the Board of Supervisors in District 3. Runs from Swan, between River and Grant, all the way to the Yuma County line. And in the north, the county lines, and in the south, the Mexican border. Only the voter can toss you out of office. So I say to them, if you continue to vote as you've always voted, then you've got to expect to get what you've always got. Thank you for my time.
All right. Our next speaker's gonna be Jerry Otoboni.
Good morning, Supervisor Elias and Board of Supervisors. My name is Jerry Otoboni, and I live in O'Valley. Is bad enough that Mr. Huckleberry and his three puppets, Bronson, Valadez, and Elias, are trying to overtax the residents of Pima County, especially the seniors, on fixed incomes, who are likely to receive a big, huge $20 increase on their Social Security every one to two years, including taxing businesses. Instead of businesses coming here, many have left. Mr. Huckleberry, the second highest paid in the United States at $460,000, including benefits with only 1 million people? In the fifth poorest city in the United States, LA County has 11 million, 11 million. And their administrator only makes 20,000 more. Now we have some people who are trying to turn Tucson into a sanctuary city. Parents, beware. The U of A is located in Tucson. If it passes next year, you'll have another option. NAU. ASU. NAU, I'm trying to think what they call it, NAU. Anyway, Northern Arizona University, Arizona State University, and GCU. We have seen the results of sanctuary cities, poop in the streets. And with the problem with the Tucson Police Department...
Excuse me, did you say poop in the streets?
Yeah, in San Francisco. Losing so many policemen, even those who finished training. It takes the time, normally it's 40 minutes for the Tucson Police for an emergency, but up to four hours for anything that's not an emergency. In Tucson, 1.8 officers per 1,000. Elsewhere, it's 2.4 for every 1,000. Better response of time with O'Valley. And also, too, I heard on the radio today, Moran is 3.5 for all problems, but not ours for emergency. And the sanctuary is too dangerous to attend the U of A. Thank you.
Well, I like the Wildcats. I'll say it out loud. I'm not ashamed of that at all. Our next speaker's gonna be John Backer.
Mr. Backer, you have three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors after giving us your name for the record. Thank you for being here and being patient today, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Supervisors and Administrator Huckleberry. I'm John Backer, Pima County resident and current, or candidate for Board of Supervisors in District 4 for 2020. For the past 10 years, I've helped clients solve some of the most challenging problems we face today. Terrorism, fraud, waste, and abuse, and more. To facilitate investigation and analysis, a visual analytics tool is used where you can see how people and places are connected. Many times, these connections are hidden from the untrained eye, but as we've all heard, a picture is worth a thousand words. In sharing a solution which contains many features and functions, we employ storytelling because facts sell and stories sell. Or facts tell and stories sell. It is easy to forget facts and figures when presented like a laundry list. However, wrap a story or analogy around it, and those who hear the message will remember it longer. I now want to share with you how Pima County government is like a county fair. Not just Pima County Fair, but fairs across America. First, the parking lot. For most fairs I've attended are vast fields which go unused for much of the year and not maintained. Naturally, this can make for a very bumpy ride, much like the roads you've not maintained here in Pima County. Next, when you go to purchase your ticket to get in, the cost is more than some can afford, but the price of admission is a very small part of the true cost of attending the fair. The ride tickets, games, food prices for a small family are so much many people eat in their cars or eat before or after because they can't afford it. The true cost of Pima County's finances are more than property taxes we pay. And our Pima County is making use of certificates of participation, which mortgages our county buildings without voter approval. The true cost will be higher. After getting into the fair, we generally see a number of food and other vendors which are charging more for the goods to help pay for the space they have to rent, passing on the added expense to the patrons. In Pima County, businesses pay more in taxes than residents do. A small annual increase in taxes or failure to maintain a level tax rate puts even more significant burden on local businesses. Therefore, businesses frequently choose not to come to Pima County. When we ride the rides, we find as we get older, we're tired of the rides. They seem more impressive when we're younger, but not now. Residents of Pima County are getting tired of the rides. Pima County Board of Supervisors and Administrator Huckleberry keep standing up, asking for bonds like 463 that voters reject, only to see projects move forward anyway, all while there's no money for roads. Finally, the carnival games. As parents, we know our young children can't possibly win because there's a trick to each one. If you're busting balloons, throw hard. If you're knocking down the milk bottles, aim for the bottom and middle of the stack. Only the people who win at those games know the secrets. In Pima County, it appears that Worldview, the bowling alley, Diamond Ventures, and University of Arizona, and a select few others can win, while the remainder of businesses and residents will pay for the prizes they receive. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Well, that concludes our call to the audience today. Looks like we made it through all the cards, and not too much worse for the wear and tear. So we have some changes to today's agenda. On the regular agenda, excuse me, page 4, item 16, franchises, licenses, and permits. It's a permit for Eddie Robinson, Skyline Country Club. The fireworks company requests this item be removed from the agenda, and the event has been canceled. So, don't go looking for fireworks up there on September 2nd. Page 1, item 3, on the addendum, Community Law Enforcement Partnership Commission. This item was placed by Supervisor Christie on the agenda, and he has asked that this item be removed. And then on page 3, item 15, grant application for the Arizona Department of Health Services. Staff has requested that this item be removed from the agenda. So hearing no objection, those will be the changes to our agenda today. Okay, we...
Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Supervisor Valadez?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just wanted to direct my comments towards the team. We asked, for a time certain, to 10:00 a.m. this morning for the presentation because we're also expecting a member of the media to show up and make sure to get you guys on camera, which is a well-deserved honor. So just wanted to know, we're not ignoring you. We just wanted to make sure that we could give you as much exposure for your deeds as we could. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I got a bat upstairs if you want to go work out. You could hit the balls over there towards that big building over there, that one. No, I'm lying. That's City Hall. Don't do that. Don't do that at all. Okay. So we're on to the Board of Supervisors, sitting as other boards. Flood Control District Board, item 6, riparian habitat mitigation plan.
Move the item. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to item 7, which is also riparian habitat mitigation plan, but this one in District 4, 24270 East Tona Pot trail.
Move the item. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're now sitting as the Board of Supervisors. Item 8 is the consent calendar.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
I'd like to vote on items 3, 5, and 7. Have discussion and vote separately, please.
I'll move the remainder of consent.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent, with the exceptions of items 3, 5, and 7. Discussion. Objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on to item 3.
Move the item.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, this is a... Let me grant this. This is the contract amendment for the University of Arizona, tenant improvements. The original lease was included, $4 million of tenant improvements. And now we're adding another, basically 3.5 plus the interest. So it brings it up to $7.5 million for this effort. The question I have is there are additional improvements, about $6 million worth? And I was wondering when we were gonna be starting to bill the University of Arizona for these improvements?
Excuse me, I didn't understand your question.
The first contract we had was a revenue contract with $4 million worth of improvements included in it, which is a total of $6.45 million. Over the, I believe it was 15 years was the original. And then after that, it was gonna go, they had an option to extend it for another 10 years. 20,789 square feet. And now the tenant improvements for this effort have gone up $3.5 million. And this has to be discussed in conjunction with the other items we're gonna be voting on. But as I went through it, we now have, and Mr. Huckleberry's memo states this, we have a total of $13.5 million in tenant improvements for the University of Arizona. So we have the $4 million plus the $3.5 million, which is this amendment. So what about the rest of the tenant improvements? How are we gonna collect the other $6 million?
Okay. I think that's a real good question because it seems to me they're being paid back at above-market value, actually. But go ahead, Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this item amends the lease. And what the lease does is allow the payback period for the additional $3.5 million to be extended to 60 months as opposed to 36 months. They'll be paying back at about $132,000 a month. At the interest rate, it's the same interest rate that we issue the debt and the certificates of participation. So the net exchange there is zero. With regard to their payments of the contractual amounts, which now will be starting to be incurred because on the addendum, there's two amendments, one for exhibits and one for the construction contract. The university will pay those amounts as, we will pay the first $7.5 million of the contract as those expenses are incurred in both exhibit development as well as in the construction. Once that's paid, then the university will be billed accordingly with each successive payment structure from the contractor as well as exhibitor, and they'll pay those amounts as they come due.
Okay.
Just a second, Supervisor Miller. Mr. Huckleberry, why don't you explain for everybody in the audience, just so that everybody gets it clear? You said it, the net-zero effect. Explain that and what that means for this particular item that you're hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We and the county will spend approximately $23.5 million of our own money in redeveloping the historic courthouse. And that includes all the improvements. The university will spend about $13.5. And Visit Tucson has agreed to pay us back their tenant improvements of about $1 million. They're in the building already, paying rent. In the rent structure and the lease, the university is required to pay all of the operating costs associated with their use, which is the basement for laboratories associated with geosciences, as well as the U of A Mineral Museum will be located on the first floor. The loan that the county made was basically because the university is raising money for the Mineral Museum through donations and donors. And as a backup, they have projected the sale of excess minerals, meaning they have duplicate minerals, and they're willing to sell those if necessary, if they don't receive full donations. They've already received about $4 million in donations from donors. Our loan is gonna be paid back over a period of time, and they are paying back the principal of the loan plus any interest of the loan. And the interest is the same interest that the county issued certificates of participation for the building. So therefore, they're also paying our interest during this loan period. So that's why I say it's a net-zero transaction.
Could I ask one more clarifying question? I'm sorry. So just for exemplary purposes, what's that interest rate on those COPS today? Obviously, it might be different, but not that much, very little change probably will happen unless, I don't know. I don't know. Markets keep talking about catastrophes, so who knows what that looks like. But Chuck, what's that rate today, just so we have an understanding of what it is?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the interest on that is 2.24%.
Okay. Very good. Supervisor Miller, please. Thank you for letting me interrupt.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Huckleberry, that still didn't answer my question. And your memorandum says there was a total of $13.5 million in tenant improvements. We're accounting for the original $4 million plus the $3.5 million. Is the U of A, are they aware they're gonna have to pay $6 million in tenant improvements that we're gonna be billing them for? And when are we gonna be billing them?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, yes, the university is aware they're gonna be paying the excess cost as the bills come due. And they'll pay the difference between the $13.5 and the $7, and they'll pay it as construction proceeds with regard to the Mineral Museum.
And the other point I'd like to bring out is that we are paying for all of this out of our budget this year in 2020. And the 2018 COPS are only three-year COPS. They are done in 2021. But we're funding this out of the 2020 budget, according to the Capital Projects line items. So there is a cost to that, paying for this all up front ourselves. So they will be billed for the $6 million of tenant improvements as those bills come due.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, yes, they will, and they are fully aware of that.
Thank you. Call a question.
Well, I was gonna make a comment, if it's okay. Well, we could call a question. It's fine.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye.
Okay, we're on to item 5.
Move the item.
Okay, discussion. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, this is another lease with the University of Arizona for two courtrooms and office space in the new courthouse over on 240 North Stone. $3,026 square feet for $5 a year. And our courts get to use this. They are, if the University of Arizona is not using the space, then our Pima County Justice Court may use the premises. This isn't market value for $3,026 square feet. And, you know, I don't know when we became a bank or when we became the person who, or the entity that is gonna be supplying the U of A with space with loans up front to pay for tenant improvements, on and on. We can't fix our roads, but, boy, we sure can always come up with these monies up front for the University of Arizona, whose budget went up hugely this year. And they got another... And they got another fifty-six point seven million dollar increase from the state this year. And their budget is two point six billion. And we're continuing to front them money, bear the brunt of their costs. And I believe at a very minimum, we should at least have priority over using those courtrooms versus giving it to the U of A.
I would just comment, though, that, that, you know, those courtrooms are not being used at this point. And despite the comments earlier, I'm supportive of our students at the University of Arizona. I was one. It helped me and my family find success in life. And, and I think there's others here in this room that would say the same thing. So if this is costing us nothing and we're helping our students be able to complete their studies, I, I think it's the smart thing to do. Anything else is, I don't know, kind of cutting your nose to spite your face. I don't see that as being real viable or, or smart at all.
Mr. Chairman, then why did we do the improvements to build those courtrooms out? That costs a lot of money. And we did it. And why did we do that if we knew we weren't going to be using them? We shouldn't have done it. And we could fix a lot of roads. People are tired of being put in the backseat. I mean, it's great to support the U of A. I went to school there as well. But the U of A has a lot more money than we have.
Well, I'm from the South Side, so I'm used to being in the backseat. Mr. Huckleberry, why don't you answer that question?
I'm not finished yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, I think that, you know, maybe you ought to ask some of the taxpayers how they feel about be putting at the end of the line to fund the University of Arizona. They don't, they're raising their tuition every year. If you look at their salaries, their average salaries for the, the top people are two hundred and forty-four thousand a year. And the top president, his base salary is eight hundred and fifty thousand. But, and they keep jacking the tuition on the students. And the very people who are paying these property taxes, who cannot afford to send their children to the U of A, are having to subsidize with these leases and with it, with these types of, with these upfront payment for their tenant improvements. If they can't afford it, they shouldn't be doing it.
I always believe in investing in our youth and investing in children and their education. I think it's the smart thing to do. And this one doesn't cost us a whole lot of money. And so I, I'm afraid I don't quite understand your argument, but I'll, I'll give it to you. Mr. Huckleberry, maybe you have a comment and you want to respond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The courtroom that's in use is one that was built, I believe, two floors of courts in that building that was built basically to accommodate the justice courts and the expansion of the justice courts. It's really, you know, a courtroom on a floor. And when you build a whole floor, you complete the whole floor, you don't leave one open. And so there's really no additional cost to the county other than what we, we're going to incur anyway. With regard to operating and maintenance costs, we operate the building on a floor-by-floor basis, so there's no additional cost there. The university law school uses it to train their students in a courtroom setting as well as to have the students observe actual, real-life court proceedings that are occurring within the building. And at the same time, our public defender and our county attorney get to basically interview and determine what students they might want to attract as employees into their organization. So that's also very beneficial to the county. So, and I think the, the, the principal fact here is that any time the county is required or we expand the justice courts either through commissioners or additional justices of the precinct, the, the agreement can be canceled and the county will use those facilities as they were initially constructed to do so.
Thank you. You know, and, and I'm, I'm not insensitive to your comments Supervisor Miller. I, I had to struggle to get through the university as well. And my family struggled together with me and my brother and sister. And, and it was not easy, but we made it. And I wish the best for those students who do struggle. And I think we should find more scholarships and more fee waivers. And frankly, I, I think Senator Sanders suggesting in the last election cycle of making university free to students here in the United States is, is an excellent idea as well. So I, I just wanted to let you know I'm not insensitive to all of that as well.
I just wanted to be real clear. There's no free ride for any of the students in this community right now. And their parents are paying these property taxes that are subsidizing the University of Arizona, who is jacking up tuition so that parents cannot even afford to send the poorest of the poor getting hit the hardest with this.
I don't think it's like they're doing that just to be mean. I think that's, that's kind of like, that doesn't make sense.
Nobody said it was to be mean. But they jack their, well, Richard.
Clarify it, that's mine.
The salaries are increasing every year. And the poorest of the poor, if they want to send their kids to the University of Arizona, they can't. Plus, they're subsidizing through their property taxes. That's okay.
I want smart faculty. I don't, I don't, I don't want dumb faculty. I want smart faculty. That's how we're going to whip ASU. Anyways, why don't we call a question and vote on this thing? Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye.
Motion carries, Board of One. We're on to item seven, Southwest Hazard Control.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, this is abatement of asbestos for the Golden Pins Boeing Lanes. And these were the ones that are going to be removed so the owner doesn't have to pay for his own asbestos abatement. We're removing the lanes for him. And it is continued, you know, taxpayer funding for this is just wrong. And we shouldn't have bought this bowling alley to begin with.
Okay, as they say, that's milk, milk. Let's move on, go ahead and vote. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries, three to two.
Okay, we are done with the consent, and we are on item nine on page three. Clerk of the Board, unfinished business. This is the ratification of the minutes from June eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and warrants from July two thousand nineteen.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item ten. This is a petition for relief of taxes for the Southern Arizona Association for the Visually Impaired. SAVI.
Mr. Chairman, this item was continued from our last meeting. The county attorney at the time indicated that SAVI did not meet the requirement because it was not a charter school. But if it had met the requirement, being a charter school, we could relieve the taxes and the interest and the penalty associated with the same. I believe the gentleman from SAVI is in the audience, but let me refer to Counselor. Am I, have I accurately described your concerns?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, yes, the statute allows this procedure that SAVI is trying to use to be used only by charter schools or trap and skeet clubs.
Okay. Could we, would the chairman like to hear from the gentleman in the...
Well, this isn't a hearing, but I'm, I'm willing to make an accommodation to them.
If they can.
And, but I want the agreement of the rest of the board since it is irregular. Everybody okay with it? Very good. Who's here? And I need you to fill out a green card once you complete your comments. And you have three minutes, I'll give you three minutes to address the Board of Supervisors. And you have to give us your name for the record, please, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. My name's Michael Gordon. I'm the executive officer of SAVI Services for the Blind. Grant Road widening project has, has been an acquisition for a four thousand two property. We've had zoning conversations with the city over the last three years. We're not able to use our, our larger property at thirty-seven sixty-seven because the zoning classifies us as an educational facility. I disagree saying that it's not just charter school or trap school, that it says educational facility and buildings that are used for education. We certainly fit within that category. We receive our funding, our primary funding from the Rehabilitation Services Administration, federal with a state match of twenty-one percent. That comes directly from the Department of Education. If we have a tax burden based upon this decision, I'm not exactly sure how we're going to pay this considering we get our money coming from the Board of Education or from the Department of Education. We have been considered a educational facility. Our zoning supports that. Through the acquisition, Tierra Right-Away and the city, they have also classified us as a educational facility. Hence, we cannot use our existing property for expansion or consolidation without rezoning and a series of development plans. That, I mean, it's a bit of a catch-22. Obviously, not a skeet and trap shooting facility. But we are not, we've never claimed to be a charter school. But we are an educational facility. Excuse me, undoubtedly, yes, sir.
How did this, how did this situation come about?
Situation came up. Our CFO left. We promoted a, our accountant as a, in an acting position. When we were asking if all our tax exemptions were being sent in, he apparently thought that just meant our sales tax exemptions that we do with the state each year. Consequently, he had since no longer worked and was, we terminated his employment. He was in an acting position. Either he, he, I'm thinking he must have sent our, our tax affidavit possibly to the wrong address. We're not able to find any of the supporting documentation.
A lack of institutional memory.
Correct, correct. Yeah, because I, I asked him several times if all our tax exemptions were in. He said they were. Obviously, we got our regular sales tax exemptions, but this is the first. And we've been in Tucson in fifty years as a nonprofit.
We appreciate that work that you've done.
And during those fifty years, have you paid taxes?
No, we've been nonprofit, 501(c)(3) the whole time. And we have filed for this, this year's affidavit, twenty nineteen.
You done, Charlie?
Yeah.
Supervisor Miller?
I have a question for the county attorney. The form that the clerk of the board has, she's got the box checked for ARS forty-two dash one-one-one oh four, which is for educational or library property. And I think I just heard it's only for skeet. I've, I don't...
I think that they apply under the law.
But if they're educational.
Counsel, please.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, let me try to clarify that the statute one-one-one oh four does apply generally to educational institutions. And so I think that's why the, I think the assessor said if they had timely filed their affidavit, they would have qualified for the exemption. The issue is the procedure that they're trying to use today is under subsection G of the statute. If you go to subsection G of the statute, it says "A nonprofit organization described under subsection C can go to the board and ask for a refund or forgiveness of unpaid taxes." If you go up to subsection C, it's charter schools and trap and skeet clubs only. Why the legislature did that, I don't know, but that's the way the statute reads. And I, and I think that's why the assessor indicated in the review form that even though they would have qualified if they timely submitted their affidavit, they don't qualify now because they're not a charter school for this process. Right, for this process. Now, there's another process under a different statute that I think SAVI did get relief for twenty nineteen taxes under. But that only applies up until your taxes are due and payable. So they can't go back to twenty eighteen under that separate statute.
How much, how much money are we talking about, Mr. Huckleberry? Just so the public can know. Mr. Burke, you got that number, anybody?
No.
It was there.
It's in the material.
It's in the material.
It's about forty-seven thousand for last year.
It's about forty-seven thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Less than a thousand dollars for each year you've been out helping the community, huh?
Correct.
Interesting way of looking at it.
Thank you.
So at this point, Counselor, what you're saying is there is no remedy for them?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, I don't, I wouldn't want to rule out the possibility that there's some remedy out there. I guess what I'm saying is that this procedure that SAVI is applying under, in my opinion, is unavailable to them if they don't qualify as a charter school. And the other more generic process, they can't go back to twenty eighteen for.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Christie? So all these other years, you qualified as a charter school?
No.
No, educational institution.
Correct.
And you were able to accommodate the tax situation under that designation?
Yes, sir.
But the, the challenge at this point is they failed because there was a change in leadership. They failed to submit the proper forms to get the exemption. And so the remedy that they were seeking was using the, the parts of the statute that, that our attorney just quoted. And it appears that that is not a remedy legally they, we can, they can use at this point. And the other remedy that was open to them, that time has expired for them to pursue that remedy. So they're sort of trapped.
Mr. Chairman, we are disputing that, that determination, saying that we've never claimed to be a charter school. And in, in that section A, I think it is, or one, it clearly talks about libraries, universities, educational buildings, or educational facilities. And within that category, we're clearly designated at, both in our coding and in our determination on the acquisition with the city. And we've always been that way. Hence, we were supposed to do five different development plans for rezoning if we tried to use our existing property because we are considered an educational facility. So we're not claiming to be a charter school, and we never have.
But you used the statute.
I think those are two different statutes, though. One says...
Let him respond to you.
Okay.
Thank you. This is good. Go ahead, please.
I mean, that's what their application says.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, we're, we're talking about two parts of the same statute. So I don't disagree that they, they probably qualify under subsection A as an educational facility. The ordinary process for obtaining that exemption is to submit your affidavit and go through that assessor process. The subsection of the statute that grants the board authority to forgive taxes or refund taxes only refers back to those that are referred to in subsection C of the statute, which is charter schools and trap and skeet clubs. So that's the basis for my opinion that if they're not a charter school, that they don't qualify.
But it sounds like you're saying there's some ambiguity there in the issue too, counsel.
No.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean...
Just a minute Supervisor.
I suppose there's ambiguity in the sense that I don't think, while the courts have dealt with this statute, I don't think that they have expressly addressed an applicant who does not qualify under subsection C. My view is that this, again, I don't know why the legislature wrote it that way, but the reference back to subsection C is pretty clear. And the courts ordinarily would say we don't, we, we won't read that in a way that takes away its meaning, whatever the legislature's intent was.
Well, some of those things the legislature does, we'll have to figure out once we meet our maker. Supervisor Miller, please.
Is it possible to continue this and explore alternatives with the assessor and see if there's any way that we could find an exemption? Because it sounds like there could potentially be another statute out there that we could...
I would be okay with that. I mean, I, I don't want to put counsel on the spot, that's not their job.
Right, he doesn't have to have the statutes memorized.
Since you were on the legis, in the legislature, perhaps you can deal with the intent issue?
It wasn't addressed when I was there. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Flag, you said that under the statute, if I understood you correctly, we reference back to subsection C, which only allows this board to deal with charter schools and trap and skeet clubs. However, we haven't addressed or explored the, the issue of what the language in the statute actually says relative to the assessor's ability to resolve the issue. Is there some leeway there?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Valdez? I agree, we haven't addressed whether the assessor had, whether there's some remedy to go back to the assessor and try to figure out another solution to this. That's not a question I can answer from the day is today, but I, I wouldn't rule it out as a possibility.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I, I give full support of the continuance that we've just discussed, but I would also suggest that not only between this board and the assessor, but also involve the county attorney to make sure whatever resolution we come to is, is one that's legally defensible.
Thank you. I'm fine with all of that. You want to make that in the form of a motion Supervisor?
Certainly, that's a motion.
You want to continue to what?
I, I clarify, it's all right. Um, yeah.
Um, yeah. Mr. Valdez, or Supervisor Valdez is making a motion to continue this item so we could clarify any pathways to resolving this, this matter legally and together with the assessor and the county attorney. So, I hate to, a second. I hate to leave that in, in limbo or anything. It's a difficult situation for what we understand, but I hope you understand that this board is, is, is struggling with this and trying to, to keep you guys in, in a good financial situation.
I recognize that. Thank you.
Very good. Any objections?
We are continuing it, so we need a time certain.
Not necessarily. Do you want to continue it to a time certain?
Look, do second meeting in September.
Second meeting in September is fine with me. Very good. That's part of the motion. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item 11, petitions for redemption, a prop, redemption of property tax exemption. Boy, did I read that wrong. Petitions for redemption of property tax exemption. I did it again, didn't I?
Property tax.
Did I?
No, you did it right.
I guess I did. I thought redemption and exemption, everything rhymes. Petitions for redemption of property tax exemption waiver.
Move the item.
Any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item A, which is a donation agreement, including resolution 2019-59.
Move the item.
Um, this is an item accepting approximately 120-acre donation of undeveloped real estate property from Margaret M. Kidwell as trustee of the Margaret M. Kidwell Revocable Trust. So, this is a nice donation to our county park system, something that I think will pay dividends to all of us into the future. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Chair, move item B.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to hearings, and this is item 13, the Tax Levy Resolution, 2019-60. Chair, move the item.
It's a hearing.
It's a hearing. Why, oh, I'm sorry. Boy, I'm glad Sharon's here straightening me out today. I don't have any cards that have been filled out. So, I would move to close the public hearing and approve item 13, including resolution 2019-60.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Discussion, Supervisor Christie.
I voted against the, the levy of taxes in the initial go-round, and I'm going to vote against it again today. We, I think, as a board, had a very productive, serious, and meaningful discussion of trying to come to some situation where our property tax could become property tax neutral. We extended the meetings on this issue a couple of times. There was adequate time, I feel, to have one more meeting before it became mandated that we made a decision. The board's majority decided that they had gone far enough as property tax neutral. I really feel that that third meeting would have been essential and that we probably or possibly, very possibly, could have come closer to establishing a property tax neutral situation. The board, at that time, chose not to do that, and I think we missed an opportunity. And the way the discussion had been going prior to that showed that there was a working compatibility to try to find this remedy. We might have been able to become more property tax neutral had we had that third meeting. Secondly, I really feel that this is a perfect example of why we should have specific and focused study sessions on the budget. I would hope that we would have at least two during the budget peering process to just to deal solely and strictly with the budget. Again, I think we missed an opportunity to reduce property taxes or at least make them more property tax neutral, and consequently, as a result of that, I'm going to be voting against this levy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Supervisor Miller, please, go ahead.
In my proposal to be property tax neutral, we were looking for $10.5 million for the budget. And I want to note that as of August 6, general fund employees only, we have already saved $8.3 million, and this came right out of the data, analytics and data govern, governance databases. We also now have additional 128 positions added at $0 since we went through the budget hearings, for a total of 1,756 FTEs at a total amount of $58,94,972. These are budgeted but vacant positions in the budget this year. That $10.5 million that I was looking for, where I already got $8.3 million in savings, Supervisor Bronson made a cut, 1% cut across all the general fund departments, which amounts to $3.6 million. We clearly could have done that budget, that tax-neutral budget. And if we calculate, you know, throughout the year, we're going to be $72 million savings from these vacant positions if they are not filled. I doubt we're going to hire almost 2,000 employees this year. And I know we had the discussion about people padding their budgets with employee FTEs, PCNs, and I know we have that issue, but these should have been cleaned up. They should have been forced to clean them up. You're either got, you either have PCNs or you don't, and if you're budgeting with this by, by padding your budget with vacant positions, there's a problem. But $8.3 million folks in one month, that was the savings, and we couldn't agree to that. And Supervisor Bronson came up with 3.6 out of the 10.5, so we really only needed about $7 million.
You know, this is a, this is a comment that we've heard numerous times now at this point, and, and I was not in favor of it because we were going to save that money anyways, and we need to have those jobs open because we need to have them filled eventually. But I'll tell you what, right now, I'd be very willing to talk about all the savings that we're going to realize from these open positions over the course of the year and put that money towards pavement preservation. Whenever you're ready to do that, I think that's a great idea. I think that's a smart way to do it, because we were going to save this money anyway. So, this whole discussion about a new definition of what a revenue-neutral budget is and all of that was, was frankly, smoke and mirrors. We're saving that money, we're going to have it, and frankly, I think we should spend it most correctly on pavement repair. So, we'll see. After we approve this, we can have that discussion on another day because it'd have to be agendized.
Supervisor Elias, I couldn't agree with you more, which is why I said we should be able to come up with a $10 million, $10.5 million.
Yeah, but it wasn't a real conversation.
Yes, it was a real conversation. I put a lot of effort into that.
I know Supervisor Valdez wanted to speak to.
And we had a lot of discussion about this and whether you agree that it met with your definition of what, the way should, things should be. You're admitting right now that we're going to save this roughly $70 million already, and we've already saved $8.3.
I don't know where that definition came from.
So, you just, you just reinforce my point.
I don't think so.
That this is padding in the budget, we're not spending it, we're saving it at the end of the year. That's what you just said, and I agree.
It's natural. Happens every year.
I know that, and that's the point. We should.
It's good.
Well, we need to spend it on roads, and I agree with you 100%, but we could have kept a tax-neutral budget.
Supervisor Valdez, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, what's lost in this discussion is we are dropping the rate. For those people that didn't, weren't here for the budget part of the discussion, we are dropping the rate. What we're talking about today was really something, a new concept introduced to us by Supervisor Miller, which we're calling the property tax-neutral budget, which basically, as you heard, meant about two point, or excuse me, $10.5 to $10.7, depending on what the math was, being removed from the budget or frozen in the budget throughout the budget cycle, which is one year, July, or July through end of June of the subsequent year. You know, part of the discussion that we're having right now is if we froze the positions that are vacant today, we could realize the savings at the beginning of the fiscal year as opposed to at the end of the fiscal year. Part of the problem that we had in that discussion is that typically, what we're seeing here because of the low unemployment, was that the same positions that were open at the beginning of the fiscal year were not the same positions that are open at the end of the fiscal year. So, if some of those positions are service-providing positions, we were hampering our ability to really provide the service that we need to as, as, as county government. So, it didn't, it didn't make a lot of sense to freeze it over here in order to be able to use it over here as opposed to at the end of fiscal. So, both my colleagues are actually correct in terms of realizing that savings at the end of the fiscal year, but obviously, at that point, we can actually budget it accordingly in, in that way. So, I just wanted to make it really clear, it's not that we're not cutting the rate today. We are cutting the rate today. But, but part of the discussion, it really is that could we have cut it differently? Yes. It would have meant a cut in what we're actually able to add to road preservations and a number of other things. There were some sacrifices that needed to be made in order to do that. So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things because there was some confusion going around there that I wanted to make sure people were aware of.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
I think Supervisor Miller makes the point that there could and probably would have been more possibilities to reduce costs, expenses, and the rate, and that's the main reason why I felt we could have done that and accomplished that had we had one more meeting, and we could have had one more meeting to explore that. And that was a missed op, missed opportunity, and I think it was a, an opportunity that was missed that's, that is going to have meaningful repercussions for some time. But the whole idea of being able to discuss this in such a manner that we were able to accomplish what we accomplished could have been even further. That's why I stressed the importance of that one more meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, call a question. Supervisor?
That's fine.
Sure.
I was just going to point out, this is a ministerial action.
Right.
And probably our discussion was a little out of order.
Right. I, I agree with you completely. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries three to two.
You want to do your presentation?
We're on to, on 14, here, hearing, this is a hearing for tax collection resolution, 2019-61. Chair, move the item and close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, again, this hearing, this resolution states that this is the authorizing the delivery of tax statements and the collection of the taxes, correct?
Yes, sir.
It's ministerial.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. We're on to franchises license, well, you know what, Ramon, it's past 10 o'clock. We should go ahead and get these students on the way. So, we'll move to item one on the addendum. It's a presentation proclamation, and I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Please, Supervisor Valdez.
We both.
If you want to make a comment or anything.
Well, I was actually going to make it down there.
Okay. Well, you want us to all join you? That would be fun.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, please.
Mr. Chairman, as most of you know, we have something new to be proud of in our community, and you see the young, the young people sitting here in the bright blue uniforms who actually are the new pride of the old Pablo. Certainly, they, they practice in a park that I remember at their age that I did a lot of other things to over at Mission Manor. And so, they just came a little short of making the World Series for Little League, but certainly, we are no less proud of you than if you had won because you represented this community and what it stands for and just the fight, I like to say, the fight of warriors, and I say that because I'm a Pablo warrior to Patrick.
I knew he was going to bring that up.
But, you know what, you have nothing to hang your heads over. We are extremely proud of you, and we just expect not only wonderful things in, in terms of your baseball career, but in, and throughout your life.
Before we get down there, I wanted to make one comment, too, because I, I'm very proud of you all as well, and I'm especially proud of your individual accomplishments as players, as families. But it's more important to think about the accomplishments that you've completed as a team, and that's really going to serve you well in life. And so, a simple message that my dad used to tell me when, when we played in organized sports as kids, he said, "Always remember the name on the front of your jersey is much more important than the name on the back of your jersey," because that's about teamwork. All right, let's get down there. Oh, we got to vote. I'm sorry, I didn't want to. No, I'm just kidding. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Yay.
We've got some certificates for the players and the coaches, so I'm going to call them up individually, and if you could join us up here, and then we'll go through the resolution. And as I'm calling the players, if the, I know we've got a number of parents and grandparents and relatives, if you could come up with your player to help them receive their certificate as well, because this, baseball is a family thing, and we want to make sure and keep it that way. So, this is in alphabetical order. Let's start with Juan Abril. Next, we have Angel Armenta Jr. Next, we have Juan Hernandez. For those of you who missed it, Richard's saying it's the line for the minor league contract. Andrew Romo. He signed your cap, your team? He signed your cap, your team? I believe the next ones are probably the coaches, which are probably in line with their families, so they're going to have to come out. their families, so they're going to have to come out. We forgot to warn you. Your dad's not here? Your dad's not here? Okay. All right, congratulations, please congratulate him for us. Please congratulate him. All right, what I'd like to do now that we've got everybody in line, if we could maybe line up together with the board members, come on, and I'll read the resolution.
Yeah, come on, you guys. Where's the catchers? Where's the catchers? Who's the catcher in this group? Come on. Come on, man, catch yourself, bro. He's got to do grunt work all the time. You go right next to him with the glasses. He's nicer than he looks.
The guys with the glasses are with the guys with glasses?
I'm telling you, man, but he's a catcher, that's his special spot. Come on, come on, everybody up.
All right. It's to the both of you.
We got to give them praise because that's a warrior up there, up there leading the charge for some of this stuff. Come on over here, so we got someone over here on this side. Don't be afraid of Supervisor Christie. He's a nice guy, he's really all right. Supervisor Miller, he's been nice.
You know, we've got Chief Stuckey in the back, but you're a much better traffic director than Chief Stuckey.
Everybody needs a job they can do.
All right, as the chairman said a little while ago, you know, what we learn as a team and the struggles that we go through are much greater than our own individual efforts. I had the honor of playing Little League baseball for nine years over at American Little League, and I will tell you that those lessons really, really stick, because no matter how talented we are as individuals, together, working together with our strengths and our weaknesses, we are so much greater, which is why you guys made it as far as you did, and frankly, learning those lessons today as young men will serve you in the future, okay? So let me read you the resolution, which is right over here to my right. Whereas on August tenth, twenty nineteen, the Sunnyside Little League major division baseball team put up a relentless warrior fight, get it? In the Western Regionals, where they made it to the championship game and eventually fell short to Hawaii. Whereas this run for the championship capped off a very successful eleven and two season, went four and zero in the District Twelve Tournament and four and zero in Arizona State Tournament. The season included perfectly pitched games, two grand slams, and incredible plays that aided the team and their journey to the championship and represented Pima County well. And whereas, under the talented leadership of coaches Ernest Moraga, Francisco Rivero, Cristobal Lorta, this championship team bonded together over a common passion of baseball, which was further magnified at concentrated practices, games, and related team outings that were jointly undertaken with the supportive spirit and full cooperation of all teammates, coaches, family members, and the greater Pima County community. And whereas, throughout this entire championship baseball season, the Sunnyside Little League team earned life, or learned lifelong lessons about camaraderie, team pride, good sportsmanship, character, confidence, competence, respect, and the community connectedness. And whereas, this exceptional experience will serve to shape these championship athletes in positive ways, which will remain with them for the rest of their lives on and off the field, and which will accompany them long after middle school as they move forward to attain similar success in high school, college, and in future professional careers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors, in keeping with an honored tradition of recognizing similar significant team and personal accomplishment, does hereby proclaim August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, to be Sunnyside Little League Twenty Nineteen Major Division Baseball Day. Now be it further resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors urges all the citizens of Pima County to join in applauding this team for their success and achievements. Witnessed here, witnessed and signed this nineteenth day of August, twenty nineteen. Congratulations.
Good together, you guys, good together, slow. Wow, Sunnyside, yeah.
Now, does anyone want to say a few words? Any of the coaches? Anybody? Who's team captain?
No one, we're all team captains.
You're all team captains? All right, grand slammer?
Well, we have two.
Who hit the grand slams? Raise your hand. Raise your hand. All right, congratulations, all of you, you are the pride of the whole Pablo. Thank you very much.
What is that?
Coaches and players. Thank you, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Patrick?
Patrick, where's, where's?
Where did he go?
Patrick, where'd he go?
I think he's, he's hard to miss. He's in the, the non. Thank you very much.
Actually, I shouldn't have.
You know, why don't we take a break? We'll be back in a few minutes at the sound of the gavel.
I'd like to call back to order the Monday, August 19, 2019 meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. We're on item two on the agenda, I mean, the addendum, Community Law Enforcement Partnership Commission. Supervisor Valdez.
Mr. Chairman, uh...
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Part of the reason I placed this on the agenda is because I wanted to have a discussion about how do we get this to work in a, on a functional level? And obviously, in, in the background material, we included an idea. But the purpose of putting this on the agenda is really kind of to have a discussion about how do we get this to work? I believe at this point, the sheriff does have a suggestion that, that we can discuss as well in a few moments. But again, the, the biggest reason I wanted this on the agenda is just to have the discussion so we can figure out where we want to go and what direction we want to go. If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I can go ahead and give some generalizations, and I think if I go a little bit astray, Chief Stuckey can correct me in terms of the sheriff's idea.
Sure, it's fine.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a motion to start the discussion?
Well, no.
Not necessarily.
No.
It's not the thing that requires that.
Because we're in the discussion phase. Well, it doesn't have to, but also, we don't, we're trying to discuss what we might make a motion on.
Okay, because in the past, whenever I try to discuss anything, I always get dinged for not making the motion ahead of time.
I've never done that to you.
Very well, let's just move on. Let's just move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor, please.
Part of the, you read, I'm sure, the background material, and this idea, part of the discussion that has occurred with the sheriff is to have really kind of a law enforcement board where there are 10 members. Each district has two members that each board member appoints, and they report directly to the sheriff. And obviously, if there are issues that this board sees that need to be addressed, we can then refer it to that board as well. But the advantage of that is very clearly the sheriff is an active participant on the commission as they report directly to him. Chief Stuckey, is that correct?
Yes, that's an accurate description. The sheriff wants community engagement, he values it greatly. Unfortunately, that's been difficult with the CLEPSY. And I think what the sheriff would like is, is an ability to engage with, with the public in that fashion to provide advice, policies and practices and things like that, but yet still have the management latitude to run his organization as he sees fit.
Discuss, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I would be, I, 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 you know, think we need to have some kind of, of review panel, and, and it's, it's truly unfortunate the way things have turned out with CLEPSY. But I would be very concerned about creating this commission without having some written information about what level of authority it has, what level of interaction there's going to be with, with the folks on this committee, commission. I, I think that right now, the city of Phoenix is going through a process of creating an independent police review panel. That has been good and fruitful, and likely they'll pass it this week. I think we should look at something like that that has some real authority behind it and has some, some interesting ability to integrate meaningful conversation between community and the sheriff's department. And, and, you know, let, let's be honest, the situation in Phoenix is being, is being pushed by a, a very horrible incident that took place up there. And I think we should be ahead of that curve and not let something horrible be the impetus for an independent police review panel that has authority behind it. So, I, I would look for, for that, it's fine with me, but I would want some interaction with the sheriff prior to it, and I want some legal information about what kind of authority it would have and, and how that authority is shared then between the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond just a little bit.
Please.
Uh, the, I'm, I'm in line with you on most of those issues. The one concern I do have is that even though we're impaneling this border commission, what we're talking about to replace CLEPSY, we don't have authority over the sheriff other than budgetary. So, we can't really theoretically give that authority to the commission. So, I mean, obviously, they, there can be a much further discussion on it, but we have to understand that the city of Phoenix and the city of Tucson even has a different relationship with our law enforcement than the county does.
I, I understand that, Supervisor, and I, I, and I'm fine with that, and I understand those separation of powers, and, and obviously, it's for the good of all of us. But in, I'll candor, I'd like to see the sheriff share that power with us voluntarily, to whatever extent he could. See, that, that, I'm not saying there has to be, you know, complete authority for us, I'm not asking for that, I'm not looking for that, but some kind of recognition that this is independent and that it's not wholly owned and controlled by the sheriff's department so that there is a matter of autonomy and, and real meaningful discussion that can take place then.
And maybe what we also want to do is, is make sure that the, obviously, what we want to do today then is just have a discussion in the direction, and then obviously, probably direct the county administrator along with the county attorney to make sure that we're not violating state statute or constitutional issues.
Absolutely.
Help us develop kind of the, the skeletal structure of said commission so that it obviously complies with the law and the constitution as well.
The only thing I ask is that citizen participation be meaningful and that the sheriff recognizes that as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
I have a question to the county attorney and then just a couple of, of general questions. One, under section two of article nine of the, of the minutes, excuse me, the meetings, it says the CLEPSY shall hold 12 meetings per calendar year, minimum of nine meetings per calendar year. So far, they've had four, and there's, how many months left in the year, four? So, what would happen if the balance of those meetings did not meet the minimum requirements? What, what status would that place CLEPSY in?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Christie, the CLEPSY is a commission that's created by the board and is subject to the board's review, and the board could take, if, if the board felt that CLEPSY was not following its guiding guidelines or requirements, I'm, I'm not exactly sure whether that's a resolution or bylaws that you're reading from, but...
Bylaws.
Well, the bylaws, I think, are adopted by the CLEPSY itself, but ultimately, it's this board that decides whether the CLEPSY is meeting its mission and, and decides if, if it feels it's not, what to do about it.
So, there's no automatic discontinuation, it would have to have a board action to, to take at that point if they have not met their minimum requirements?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Christie, again, I'm not sure the exact language of the bylaws, but I don't know that there's any thing I've seen that would say that anything automatic would happen to the CLEPSY if it failed to meet some obligation.
Okay, and just a general comment or two is, as Supervisor Valdez pointed out, that there is no authority by the Board of Supervisors over the sheriff as far as this type of a forum. And I don't, and I never have been able to understand why the Board of Supervisors even has its hand in this issue. So consequently, my feeling is that if the sheriff wants to do something of this nature, let him do it on his own and leave the Board of Supervisors out of it.
Well, that sounds nice. Unfortunately, you know, we have to have citizen participation. And it's, it's been the history that, that has not always been easy in communities. And in fact, most countries of, most cities of any size here in this country have independent review panels for sheriffs and, and police departments regardless of their statutory authority. So, it's a matter of doing the right thing, and, and I don't really want to get into a protracted argument about why we don't have a quorum. But it's pretty obvious that we need to have meaningful community input into these discussions rather than just us arguing about what the sheriff's powers are. Because no matter how we look at it, we can't go back to the days of the 1950s where law enforcement acted with impunity. It doesn't work like that anymore, and it's not ever going to work that way again. And so, we have to recognize that, and we have to accept it, and we have to move forward with the community being a full partner in discussions about very difficult issues that surround law enforcement.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
My feeling about this is I agree with Supervisor Christie, if the sheriff wants a committee, he has a committee. As with anything that we vote on, on this board or that we have a discussion about, the citizens are welcome to come here and participate and voice their feelings, which many have on these various grant votes that we've taken, and we can take that information into consideration. I don't agree with you that the sheriff's department acts with impunity. I think Sheriff Napier has created an environment very open for citizen participation, created an environment where people can approach him, talk to him, and meet with him if they want. He's very open, and so, I appreciate everything the sheriff's done. I think he's bent over backwards to make sure people were satisfied with the transparency there at the sheriff's department. And, you know, I just, I agree with Supervisor Christie, if he wants a committee, he can have a committee. I think the reason it was established for us had to do with voting on the grant funding, which we've all done for years. And if people have comments or input, they can contact our offices as they do with any other agenda item or come here and speak before the board. I, I guess I don't see a need for us to create this cross-function, if you will, commission.
I understand that, but one correction to your comments, I did not say that the sheriff's acts with impunity. I said, "We're not returning to those days when people acted with, when sheriffs and police departments acted with impunity without input from the community." Those days are gone, and they should be. Any other comments from board members? If not, I'd make a motion that we continue this item till our second meeting in September so that we don't completely lose the energy from the conversations that you've had.
I'll second the motion, but I would suggest that we also add that, that we have the staff along with the county attorney's office and the sheriff's office sit to kind of figure out and structure and, and fill in all the gaps that we're talking about.
I like it, I think that's good, thank you. Okay, that's the motion that's on the floor to continue this item and that staff and the sheriff and the county attorneys work on creating a hybrid of all of this to meet the needs of community input and the sheriff and the work that the fine folks in his department do. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Hi. Hi.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries three to two. Item three has been removed. Item four is a discussion of releasing a county attorney memo from Mr. Flag here to the rest of the board, and I'll move the item.
You're moving, you're moving to waive?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, moving to waive, attorney's client privilege.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, we have a second?
Yes.
Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, we didn't finish the regular agenda, are we moving back to that?
What did we not finish? Oh, I, I apologize. Yeah, yeah, that was my fault. So, we're at hearings, items 15, 17, and 18. I have no cards that have been submitted, I see nobody coming forward. Sheriff, move those items and close public hearings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, 16 has been canceled, and we needed to add, it's 15, 17, and 18.
I said 15, 17, and 18, sir. Okay. I just skipped 16 because it had already been removed, and we had already discussed it. Uh, okay, so there's a motion and a second on the floor to approve 15, 17, and 18. And close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Uh, we're on to item 19. This is a co-text amendment relating to wastewater cleaning up language. No pun there intended, but it's natural to say that, right, Mr. Becker? Ordinance 2019 dash 20, chair, move the item and close the public hearing. Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're onto item 20. This is a hearing, this is a non-code ordinance, 2019 dash 21. No pleasure for the board?
I'll move the item.
Close the public hearing, second.
We have a motion? No second?
Yeah, no, there was a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'm sorry. Motion and a second to close public hearing and approve our ordinance number 2019 dash 21. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, on the addendum agenda, item five, I'm going to move the item, but I found this unusual. This is the first time we've seen this because of the new change in state statute. And I was just curious why the clerk put it under District One, but after talking with her on Friday, because this is a new situation, she deemed it was, this was the way to go. You may want to just clarify that for everybody, Julie.
Yeah, we didn't have a, sorry, Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, we didn't have a previous process for this, so we developed one, and we looked at past agendas, there had been some on past agendas, and they, they were listed under the Board of Supervisors. And it probably would have been more appropriate, I would have said the location is within District One, so we'll make that adjustment.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I got a, did you get a good second, okay.
We have a second, I, I don't know, I, Council, I'm wondering how this, these new rules and this new statute interacts with the gaming agreement that we have with the Native American tribes here in the state of Arizona, and if there's questions that are still unresolved about that. I have not heard from them.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's, some I'd have to look into, I have not looked into that.
That's what makes me very uncomfortable.
This is ministerial, though, just like liquor licenses.
I'm just saying, I, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Valdez.
And I'm not really sure who can answer this to your question, I believe this is paramutual wagering on horse racing, I don't believe that Indian gaming does that.
It doesn't, but this is off-track, so, it's not quite the same as paramutual wagering at a site where those races are taking place.
I believe it's the same as what Greyhound Park is doing.
Yeah.
That's true, that's a good analogy, I haven't thought of it, Supervisor.
But if you're concerned, I don't have a problem delaying it, assuming there's no collateral.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is here, representing the Turf Paradise.
I suppose, what's your name?
Chairman, Supervisor, for the record, my name is David Johnson, I am the Assistant General Manager at Turf Paradise, what you have before you right now is a request for an off-track betting approval, there are fifty-eight of these in the state of Arizona, they are all regulated by the Arizona Department of Gaming, which is also the one who oversees the gaming compacts with the, with the, all the Arizona tribes, it is a complete and separate entity, the tribes have chosen not to participate at this moment in off-track betting, and that's primarily because there's just not money in it for them, it's a very small activity, it's very slow, it doesn't require somebody to just put somebody in a machine and pull a handle, pull a handle, pull a handle, in horse racing, you have a race that will go off maybe every thirty minutes, so, it's, there were tribes that used to have it, we used to have an off-track betting location at Fort McDowell Indian Casino, but they chose to have it removed just because they could better utilize that area of their property, but it is a regulated activity by the Arizona Department of Gaming, as I said, it does require the approval of the local governing authority, which is, in this case, is the Board of Supervisors, and one thing that I would like to make clear so that you guys are comfortable in this, that you guys always have control over this activity, so, if this ever did become a problem, all the board has to do is rescind their approval, and we have to shut down.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, is this my question?
Yes, Supervisor Bronson.
Is what we're doing similar to what we do with fireworks permitting and liquor licenses? Is that, are we, that's the question I have, is this similar to, in terms of what our responsibilities are, is this similar to what we do in those instances, so then, the question, I guess I'm really asking, if we decide not to, is there repercussions for that action based on the new, on the statutes?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, the way I read the statute, it's similar but not quite the same as the liquor licenses, with liquor licenses, the board makes a recommendation to the liquor board, I believe, the way I understand the statutes and the regulations here, the board approval is like a required condition of the state-level approval that they get, so that, again, the way I understand it, if the board doesn't approve it, they're not going to be able to engage in that activity.
So, it would be more like planning and zoning?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, I mean, in the sense that the board does have that, I guess, veto power, I think, I think that's a good analogy.
Because it stops with us, it doesn't go back up to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, I think the commission still does have a role, but they have to go to the commission with that approval in hand from the board.
But the commission can override us, that's my question.
No, they cannot.
Okay.
Is this in fact a ministerial act, though?
No, not if they can.
Mr. Chairman, no, I would not describe it as ministerial.
That's what I was hoping to clarify, because that's who you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, wait, if there was another, yeah, no, if there was, if it stops with us, it's no longer ministerial, it's like a liquor license, it's just like a commission recommending to us, but we have the final say, but I think what our counselor, our attorney just indicated is that we do have the final say.
That's correct.
Okay, anything, anything else? Roll call, you can have a seat.
Where are we now?
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I guess we don't have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, someone had a motion to continue, I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve this item.
I think that was my.
That was her motion.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Supervisor Bronson, and actually, you seconded it.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
No. Motion carries four to one, we're on to item six, it's a subordination agreement.
Move the item.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller?
This was an item that came before the board several months ago, and I have a few questions, this is Pima County bond funding, six hundred and four thousand, and the, who is it that's using this fund, these funds, is it the Catholic Community Services? FSL Padre Keno Village, they are utilizing these funds to get a roughly million-dollar loan from Rocky Mountain Community Reinvestment, we are going to be subordinate under there for as far as collection of funds, my question on this one, originally, we had investment from Rio Nuevo, we had investment from the city of Tucson, that appears to no longer be in this contract, and can somebody answer why that's no longer in the contract?
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller?
Ms. Lester, please.
Thank you, I do not know the answer to the piece about Rio Nuevo, we're happy to get that back to you, this was simply the transferance from Wells Fargo Affordable Housing to Rocky Mountain Community Investment, I do not have the documents that would go back and talk about Rio Nuevo, that's not part of this request, but if you wanted to continue it, we can happily get that information for you.
Okay, then, I move to continue this item until we get all the information, until, was it the first meeting or second meeting in September, does that give you enough time? First meeting?
Do you want the first or the second, Supervisor Miller?
First.
First?
She said the first was good.
That's fine. All right, any discussion on the motion, any objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item seven, this is Human Resources, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item eight, dedication right away, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections.
I object.
Okay, roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries three to two. Community Development and Neighborhood Conservation, item nine, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, I should add, this is for Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation to provide affordable housing expansion and rehabilitation for people living with HIV. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item ten, Community Services, Portable Practical Educational Preparation Incorporated, Amendment Eight, to provide workforce development services, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Item eleven is Job Path, Amendment Number Two, to provide for workforce development services, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item twelve, Southern New Hampshire University, to provide a lease agreement for the property owned at ninety-seven East Congress, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Discussion, Supervisor Miller?
On this item, I had several questions, and I'll point out some inconsistencies, the first one is, the contract states that there's forty-four thousand three hundred and forty-one square feet, the appraisal shows forty thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet, so, there's a difference there, they, have they received their approval to operate in Arizona yet? Or is that still pending?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Huckleberry, please?
Yes, Supervisor Miller, that is, I think, scheduled for the board August twenty-fifth, the difference in the space is, we've seen that all the time, and we're standing by our numbers, and that's what they're paying for, whether the appraisal says forty-one thousand or forty thousand.
Okay, so that was their appraisal, that's right, they paid for the appraisal, okay, so it'll be the forty-four three forty-one, have they received their approval to operate in Arizona, or is that still pending?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, that's what is pending before the Arizona Board of Education on, I believe, August twenty-fifth.
Okay, okay.
And apparently, they're fairly confident that they're going to receive it because they've wanted to execute the lease.
Okay, the, there's a clause in there that says we are to provide the existing furniture that is left there from Caterpillar, and that we are going to provide furniture that is in storage, is this the storage at Goodman's, the, what is it, four thousand square feet that we have there, is that what that is referring to?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, yes.
And how much do we pay Goodman's to store that furniture? If I could get a copy of that, that would be, and how much furniture roughly do we have in storage there? I would like that information, too, and then, one of the requirements is that we're going to be replacing the existing fan coil units, does anyone know the cost of that?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, that's been included in our facilities, we're going to fund, I believe, it not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
So, four hundred thousand. And then, one clause that really bothered me was, we're going to allow them to sublease to anyone that they decide to sublease to, and they're getting the benefit of, they're a nonprofit, what if they rent it to a nonprofit, and they're allowed to sublease without a Jeeplet, if, if, under that, that's the way that I read it, so, is that the case, that they can sublease to anyone, and then, what happens if it's not a nonprofit that qualifies?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I believe the subleasing is to a similar type of unit or organization, and relates to them and the nonprofit educational institution, and I don't believe they'd be allowed to lease to a nonprofit based on that clause.
There was no exception noted there, that was just a concern I had that I, as I was going through it, are we providing the computers for them as well?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, no.
And then, we are allowing them to do alterations up to twenty-five thousand dollars without our consent or oversight, should, this seems like a lot of money for them to modify our structure, and then, you know, what is our liability, are we the ones that have to reconfigure after they leave?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, twenty-five thousand is probably a pretty low number, and it just really allows them to move a wall around or two as they change and grow, because the initial population of that building is going to be about a hundred and fifty, and they project to grow to three hundred and fifty, so.
So, this is accumulative, not a one-time?
It's one-time, and if you look at moving a wall or two, and repainting and recarpeting, you can get to that number pretty quickly.
Okay, okay, that's all the questions I had, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Christie? If the university does not get the approval from the State Education Commission that's pending, what happens?
The voice, the lease would be void.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries four to one, we're on to item thirteen, this is Design and Production Incorporated, Amendment Number One, to provide for the Historic Courthouse Exhibit Fabrication for Pima County Visitor Center and University of Arizona Mineral Museum Project, chair, move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
I'd just like to point out that the letter from, it's Exhibit A three, it's an August seventh letter from Design Production, Inc., is that the majority of this is due to the added scope, they have additional scope based on final design package, developed, added millwork, added AV, added exhibit scope, increased lighting spoke, scope, developed software scope, artifact scope increase, increased graphics, so, that is the main driver behind this increase, and we already discussed earlier that they're going to be billed for the six million additional of the thirteen point five million that they're already capturing in the leases, so, those were my comments on this and my concerns, thank you.
Okay, before we do a vote, Ms. Honeycutt, you got your camera squared away there, so we get a good shot of us doing that?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure, all right, that was a good one, roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries four to one, we're on to item fourteen, Lloyd Construction Company, Amendment Number Four, to provide for construction manager at risk services for the Historic Courthouse Final Phase Construction, chair, move the item.
Sir.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
Under this contract, which is with Lloyd Construction, the letter from him, Mr. Paul Peña, who's the director, to Pima County Facilities Management, the first paragraph, "This GMP includes the costs that pertain to the University of Arizona, scope of work only, when I go and look at the detailed estimates, they're all broken out by U of A and the Visitor Center," so, the details don't jive with what the cover letter says, so, that's one concern, and can anybody explain what is driving that?
Mr. Huckleberry, you want to answer that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, that's a generic reference, because the contractor's building both, and so, in his letter, he includes that, but he specifically talks about the increase being solely related to the Mineral Museum.
But his detailed estimates that add up to this that are included in that background material all reference the Visitor Center and the U of A portion separately, that was the concern, is that as I'm looking through these, the proposal from, on the concrete work, Pima Court concrete work, U of A concrete work, they're all separated out in the estimates, so, I think someone needs to check that and make sure that the numbers that add up are just the U of A portion, because he did include, it's on, it's on just about every one of the estimates, here's one, the steel contractor, breakdown of material and labor for U of A, breakdown for Pima County, and so, that's all throughout this whole estimate, so I hope someone will check that to make sure that that is adding up to the same number, I don't know why he would include estimates that don't pertain to the U of A in here, and, you know, he's got the Dillinger courtroom estimated in here, which is not a part of the U of A, and then, the other concern I had was, why are we paying a contractor, they're spending of this total three point four million, they're subbing out everything except they have oversight, and they're spending six hundred and fifty thousand of that, which is roughly twenty percent, to, for construction manager at risk services, that is a concern, all of these contractors are licensed bonded insurer, many of them, I checked, some of them have been in business for years, I assume they're able to do their work standalone, but they have oversight. I assume they're able to do their work standalone, but they have over six hundred and fifty, fifty-two thousand dollars worth of employees assigned to these, this project. That's their billing. So, why is it so high?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, you have to remember, this is a construction manager at risk contract, and this is the Fourth Amendment. In the documents, you'll see that, and I think previously Supervisor Miller mixed and referenced some, some additional items. Kind of remember, this is the increase that's solely related to the university. The other items that are estimated in there have already been included in the contract that was allowed up to five point nine million dollars. And that's what a construction manager at risk contractor does, is he generally operates as a prime and brings in subcontractors, and that's a fairly standard fee in construction manager at risk services.
Twenty percent of the contract, and then he's marking it up with, this is a cost plus, then he's marking it up with his fees, his own labor, with his fees on top of his labor estimate, which I found interesting. And that was in the background material, Cost of the Work Staffing Plan, and he shows several individuals by name. Hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and ten, a hundred and thirty-four, a hundred and twenty-one. Seems like an awful lot of people overseeing contractors that are capable of doing their own work. That's just really jumped out in this. And the fees, he's got a six percent fee that he's adding. I assume that's profit, and then he's adding fees on fees, if you look at his cost breakdown. That's all I have to point out.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries three to two. Chair, move the remainder of the addendum. Motion and a second. Discussion. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned. Hearing no objections.